Good evening and welcome to the Spencer Board Selectmen Regular Meeting of May 27, 2015. It's about 10 past 6:00. If everyone could rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to skip over number three until we have a full attendance for...
I'm going to move that to the June 8th, which is Monday, and that is your next business meeting.
The next item is approval of minutes from the Business Meeting Executive Session of May 11, 2015, and the Workshop Meeting of May 18, 2015. Do I have your motion?
Motion approved.
I have motion approved, do I have a second?
You want me in?
You're the only game in town, Bob.
Second.
Any more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Would any citizens like to come forward and be heard for citizens' input? All righty, any communications, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, I have two things, please. Just for your information, there will be a public hearing on Monday, June 15th, here at the Board of Selectmen's meeting at 6:00 PM, and that is for the Route 31 Corridor Study. Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission will be presenting findings and recommendations from their year-long study of the Route 31 Corridor. And if you recall, there was discussion of Steve here at one point introducing this study that was going to be going on, he talked about incorporating sidewalk designs and plans and future funding grant applications, and this is a big part of it. It goes from, I think, Holden, Paxton, Spencer, to Chalton. So, they'll be here on June 15th. All are welcome, residents, business owners, property owners, and any other interested stakeholders that are interested in the Route 31 Corridor Study, which again is primarily a transportation and infrastructure study. The second thing I have is just want to congratulate our Steve and Tyler, our Utilities and Facilities Superintendent. He will be receiving the 2015 CMR-PC Transportation Planning Award at this year's annual dinner meeting. If you recall, Selectman Pepe was there a couple of years ago when someone else sitting at this table was given an award for that same group. And this time it's Steve who's certainly instrumental for, on behalf of the Town of Spencer, in working on all of our transportation and infrastructure projects. He plays an integral part, sitting on the MPO with them, and he'll be getting this year's annual award at Cyprian Keys on June 11th. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Administrator? All right, let's move on to new business. Policy introduction, Fire Department Awards Policy. Chief Parsons, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Just a quick blurb is just a reminder of the policy and policies that we have. At times, your board or different departments within our operations will seek adoption of certain policies regarding employees, equipment, et cetera. And so you will have an introduction tonight of one of the policies from the Fire Department, and then several from the Police Department that are new, and then some amendments. You cannot vote on those tonight, you can't vote on them at a workshop. If you have any questions, we can certainly discuss them further at a future meeting, but the plan would be to eventually adopt these at a later business meeting in June.
Chief.
Okay, this policy, the offices of the department have been working on for about six to eight months now. Kind of goes back to our recruitment and retention of the firefighters. This is something where we want to use to be able to retain firefighters. Be able to acknowledge what they're doing throughout the course of the year, if they've achieved certification in a certain area, firefighter 12, fire officer, fire inspector, anything like that. Also, if they become driver operator of a number of vehicles, whatever, they would get a ribbon that would be for them to display on their dress uniform. Kind of is an acknowledgement for us that they've actually achieved something, and we're awarding that acknowledgement. And there's a number of criteria to go through. Instructor certification, inspector, driver operator, service combination. If an individual or group has gone beyond the call of duty. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we presented citations to Captain LaCare and Officer...
Laporte?
Laporte. For the fire attend cherry street with pulling a lot of people out of that home. We gave them a citation. That's where this would fit in as well. They would receive some type of ribbon on it. Department Service Award is something that maybe they perhaps did, like a large group of us with the radio project. We did the conduit all the way from the Cableaxis building up to the water tank for cost of materials only for the community. Something that could be used. And all these would be determined, they would have to fill out a form, I think you have a copy of, nomination form that they, an officer would have to fill out. It would go to the officers of the department and be discussed, and ultimately would come down to being forwarded on to me for approval. And we're looking at perhaps during some of these, perhaps like at the annual town meeting, where they can be formally recognized by the community and by the board on what they've earned for that.
So Chief, was this basically, the guys worked out for six months, did they use a boilerplate to create those?
Yeah, we've used a town out of Connecticut that does this. We've kind of modified it for our use. Like the ribbon color and pattern, we were dealing with a whole bunch of different ribbon colors and whatnot in the last few months. And depending on what company you go with, with ribbons, it's a different color. That's why we left it blank until we get approval of the policy itself, and then we'll work on actually getting the colors, what the ribbons would be and stuff like that. Like with driver operator, if they get driver operator on one, they would get the ribbon, and then they would get subsequent stars on that ribbon to put on, based on the amount of apparatus and things like that. Same thing with the instructor certification, they'd get a ribbon, and then if they would get instructor two or three, then they could have those other subsequent stars on that ribbon as well. They're not going to have a whole bunch on their chest. I think there's eight total, eight or nine total.
Does this create entire pictures to when these guys get promoted, or...?
Not so much promoted, but when they get any type of, like right now, if they get their firefighter 12 certification, they get a paperwork from the state saying that and a pat on the back by us. Good job, you know, now they can go to fires. Now they'll be able to display something as well. Something that we should be awarding to them when they do obtain some type of certification, that they can wear on their dress uniform, show to the people that, you know, they do have this, they've got these other certifications. And hopefully what it's going to do is create a sense of competition to try and get more. That's what the ultimate goal is with the retention, you know, showing that we do appreciate what they're doing, and if you continue doing more, you'll be able to wear more on your uniform.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Those per points.
Both ready to go.
Yeah. It doesn't pertain to this, but it pertains to what's happened the last few weeks. One was the fire on Maple Street. They did a hell of a job to knock down that fire with what we had to work with. He called in, the other guys right off, which was a good thing, because we didn't have too many guys in town. And I think they did a heck of a job. So, and then also, the new truck came in this past Tuesday.
Saw the picture today. Uh, this Tuesday, we had training on it. So it came in, I think, last week.
Last week.
Last week.
So the new truck is in, they're working on that, trying to get that up online, so...
Yeah, I saw a picture today of it, they got the sprayer going or something on...
Yeah, they have the dillage gun up on the top. They were going, they were pumping with it down at the Spencer Fairgrounds. It's actually out right now getting the radios put in it.
And I'll concur with him, you got my note the day after the fire, so yeah, great job, great job. It could have been a lot worse if it sprinted any further than on that road.
Could have been, and I have to, you know, we have to throw cadavers out there, I mean, to Selectman Fritz, he helped us quite a bit out there. Ben Romano from the Rescue Squad. We were, I think, eight people is initially what we had on scene for firefighters, with two buildings that were on fire. And I think the firefighter, especially on engine four, did a heck of a job knocking that heavy fire down on 42 Maple, like keep it where it was.
Great, kudos again.
Chris, you got anything on the...
Nope.
Okay, well, I've got no issues, we'll see if John and...
Gary.
Gary have any questions, thank you very much. Any questions?
You can run the name tags around so you can see.
Yeah, he's not here, I don't have anyone to stare at, so out of sight, out of mind, I guess. So I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'll add it to the June 8th agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Are you available at that meeting?
I guess.
Can you get back to me if you're not?
Yeah, I think I am.
Okay, let me know if you're not, but if...
If there's issues, we'll drag him in. If there's issues, we'll drag you in.
Well, I think the fact that John and Gary weren't here tonight, I'd like to see if Bob could make it that night. I'm not usually dragging you in here, but just in case.
Okay.
And then that way we can answer everything that night, I hate to keep going on, on, and on. So try to wrap it up at the next meeting, answer any questions they have. See you on the 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Chief. Next item on new business is policy introduction, Police Department Awards Policy. Chief Darren.
So in your packet, David has given us 12 amendments and six new policies. So I'll allow him to give brief presentations and the same thing. I would add to the June 8th agenda for additional questions from the missing Selectmen, or if you guys have follow-up questions, and then try to move forward that even. I'll turn it back to Chief Darren.
So in accordance with Mass General Law, it's Chapter 41, 97A, just as far as a little bit of a background, the Chief of Police will make suitable regulations governing the Police Department. As required, these new and amended policies have been impact bargained with the union, which we're obligated to do. Policies and regulations are key as they provide a set of parameters to function within. They are necessary not in all circumstances, because we do a lot of work without policy, to address complex tasks and high-risk activities in particular. And it does become necessary from time to time to amend these or to promulgate new policies and regulations due to changes in the law, new legislation that's passed and changes in best practice as we determine them. We presently have 34 rules and regulations along with 54 policies and procedures, and I'm proposing tonight amendments to 12, along with six new. And just to touch, quickly touch, and then you can, whatever questions you've got, the amendments. Vehicle pursuits for one, one of the amendments we added was is to discontinue pursuits when we run into situations where we're on an unimproved way, which could damage the vehicle. Electrical weapons, policy number three, was basically just some administrative changes as far as reporting procedures. 13, the handling of juveniles, the law changed, where it increased the age of being a juvenile to 18. 14, transportation of prisoners, we now have spit hoods and straps to help keep them from damaging the vehicle or injuring the officer. 16, traffic accidents, it incorporates some like the regional accident reconstruction team into the investigation process. 19, ambulance calls, we do is, I have the officers put a little bit about what they do as far as medical treatment goes, which we had never done that before, just as far as helping them recall what had transpired with the ambulance call and what their actual involvement was, other than just going to the call and then clearing from the call. Abandoned 911 calls is a response issue, which I don't want to go into because it's a security issue. Bomb threats, the law has changed, for the most part, and we incorporated this pretty much what the State Fire Marshal's office has for procedures. Use the preliminary breath tester, again, that's just some administrative and reporting issues. Same with the emergency restraint chair. Fire calls, we incorporated a little bit about what we do and how we handle investigations, since we're helping the Fire Department with their investigation of arson's. And last of the amendments is the mutual aid, and basically what we did is we incorporated new regional and statewide mutual aid agreements that now we have that are a factor into the mutual aid process. And the new policies that we're looking at is the defibrillator use, and we've been using those for a few years and running off of directives and memos, so it was time to finally put it into a policy form. The child requiring assistance, which is new legislation. Authorized firearms, which we did now to incorporate the use of patrol rifles. harassment prevention orders, which again is new legislation. The active shooter, which deals with situations, obviously self-explanatory as far as dealing with that goes, whether it's at a school or whether it's at a residence or a business. And then lastly, officer-involved shootings, how we deal with those situations, not necessarily the shooting itself, but the aftermath. How we deal with the investigation, how we deal with those, all the parties that are involved, which is very topical at this point in time. That's all she wrote, unless you guys have questions.
Chief, on any of these, do we have any review by legal on any of these changes, or with the climate, you understand the climate that we're in with...
We usually don't. How it works is that the template, for the most part, comes from either the International Chiefs Association, or the Mass Chiefs Association, or the Central Mass Chiefs Association, and we basically tailor it to our particular community, but for the most part, it's a majority of that part of it, the legal aspect of it, has been reviewed by council of those organizations. So we, in the past, we have not.
The only time we would involve our own council is if it was related to collective bargaining, in terms of bargaining the impact of any of these, and today we haven't had any need to do that.
That question was only to protect all of us, you know, but again, basically it's a boilerplate that you use with...
Exactly, I mean, we change it to make it our own, but for the most part, the legal aspect of it has been researched and developed before it's been forwarded to the departments in that form of a template.
And along the same lines, you know, that association doesn't see any, there's no way this stuff can be challenged and...
Anything can be challenged.
Anything can be challenged, but there's no...
And your coat room, it's almost steals it, it says...
Yeah, yeah, but there's no, Jerry, there's no risk. No risks that you see in what you've changed.
No, not that I see, because obviously, to get to you, they have to get through me, so I wouldn't put anything before you that I felt that there was under risk.
Good, great. Anything else from the board? All right, same situation with Gary and John.
I'll add it to the journey, I'll allow John to ask his questions, June 8th.
Would they approve them that night if there was, obviously if there was...
If it's not doable in scheduling, let me know and I can always move it around.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item on new business, appoint town council.
So there are only a couple of things that you appoint directly that I don't have the appointing authority, and one of them is town council. We usually do a two-year appointment, and we've been working with the firm of Collins and Weinberg, very reasonable in terms of fiscal responsibility, in terms of controlling costs, and we've always had great response. They attend every, Stanley Weinberg attends every town meeting, special town meeting, very responsive to getting opinions to me when needed, reviewing certain documents, contracts, and also responding to issues that any department heads have. So my recommendation is to move forward with another two-year appointment.
And not a large increase?
Going from 175 to 180, so, yeah, per hour. So again, that's cheap. I mean, you know, typical, some of the larger firms are talking 300, 400 dollars an hour.
And schools don't even touch that either, so...
No.
Okay, I've got nothing else, any questions from the rest of the board? I mean, I've been happy with, in my experience...
Stan's worked out good. Does a good job.
So, do we take, is it going to prove that later...
Nope, you would vote tonight, and I would then issue an appointment letter, and he would get sworn in, and then be our town council moving forward for the next two years, beginning July 1st.
I'm okay with moving forward the vote, I'll ask the board if what their pleasure is, you'll make a, take a vote on this?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to appoint Stanley Weinberg, the town council, again.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
There we go.
Next action item, appoint Assistant Treasurer, Assistant Collector.
Correct, so there are two statutes that relate to Assistant Treasurer and Assistant Collector, Chapter 41, Section 39A and 39C. Essentially, in the absence of the treasurer, who's an elected position, in our situation, treasurer and collector is combined, so in her absence or his absence, when they're on vacation or other, on any other type of leave, we need to allow someone to have the authority to act in that position, in terms of, you know, certain duties that would qualify. So, under the statutes, actually, the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority for both of these two positions. We've had some changeover, as you know, we had, the treasurer collector came in new, and also the two senior clerks that came in are new as well. We figured we'd give them a little bit of time to establish themselves, and before assigning these duties, but at this point, the treasurer collector recommends the appointment of Rebecca Padoni as the Assistant Treasurer and Assistant Collector. And my recommendation to you is that you re, or confirm the recommendation of the treasurer collector.
Any questions?
Nope, I know both of them, so...
Chris, you okay?
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to make Rebecca the Assistant Treasurer and Collector.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, you have it. Old business, discussion, annual town meeting, annual town election follow-up.
Well, as you know, the town meeting was on May 7th, and the election was on Tuesday, May 12th. In between, we had a workshop, which was a very short meeting, just for my evaluation. So this being a business meeting, I figured we'd have any discussion that you'd like to talk about in terms of the town meeting, the way it went, procedures or other decisions that were made, and same thing with the town election. I can tell you from the town election, although disappointing the votes were, we appreciate the feedback of the voters. So we had two capital projects that unfortunately weren't funded, that certainly make it difficult to fund those through the existing resources that we have. And then the other election question that did not pass was changing the treasurer collector to an appointed position, so we'll continue to move forward in the environment that we have with that position being elected. So from an internal standpoint, we discussed things that we can do differently in terms of the election, those two questions, the debt exclusions. I think just for those that are watching, and also for the Selectmen tonight, there are certain requirements when drafting these questions, they come right out of the statute, and actually, the law has the actual question with a blank and just filling in the project. One of the things that's included in those two questions, or in the questions for debt exclusions, is the term proposition two and a half. So some people, the feedback we've gotten, that when they see proposition two and a half, they think override, and that's a permanent situation. Debt exclusion is not, and there's some other words within that statute that talks about bond, which, you know, as we all know, bond and borrowing and debt has an end at it. So even though it's not specific in terms of a time or dollar amount, there is, it is a temporary situation, just until such time we've paid off the debt for that particular project. So proposition two and a half does govern both overrides and debt exclusions, they both fall under the statute of proposition two and a half. However, there is a perception out there that proposition two and a half only means overrides, and that is not the case. So between that, and then the other part of it, the question does not include, is not allowed to include any dollar amount. Dollar amount is to be set by the Board of Selectmen at a later date or a prior date, depending on the borrowing structure that they so choose, the length of time, the interest rate, principal interest, even principal, even payment, et cetera. So that's another confusing part, is that the language does not include the dollar amount. We did have multiple public hearings, multiple discussions, TV shows, SCA, we tried to get the information out there. I think what we'll try to do in the future, from an internal standpoint, we'll try to increase any and all methods of information we can, not only what the project is and the dollar amount, but also, I think, for myself, putting out information in terms of what actually an override does, I mean, debt exclusion does. We've done that before, before we had meetings, and I had PowerPoint explain to everyone, this is the impact on the tax rate, and this is, you know, how long it's going to be, blah, blah, blah. But I think that communication somehow was lost, or it only got to certain people, so we need to find ways to get that to other people, whether it's me writing a letter to the editor of the new leader the week before, or mailings, direct mailings, informational packets, et cetera. Maybe I could talk to you about setting up a booth up there, ask the town manager before you go in and vote, you know, if any questions, and make myself available for that, so, you know, we'll continue to take the feedback. I think there's certainly still a portion of people that made it known to me that it's still difficult to ask of them to increase the tax levy, no matter what the project is, based on the capacity and the ability to pay. And that was made clear, but multiple people came into my office explaining that regardless of the project, it was difficult to approve the money, and that's a personal choice that people make. So we'll continue to try and find creative ways to fund projects that are needed, and certainly, it was disappointing, because it's 40% of the cost of what we've been able to do already in terms of getting grants and using reserves to pay for the communications project, and some of it's already up and ready to go, but we can't use it yet until we find a way to fund this other part. So that's the feedback I've gotten, and we'll try to always improve on the things we do, and we'll move forward that the next time.
I agree with everything you've stated, Mr. Administrator. You know, I personally would like to see where we have the opportunity to have additional public hearings on this. Yeah, I keep going back to the Sibley Project, it's not apples to apples, but the effectiveness of it was that we, the group had its act together and continued to hammer it, and it was, they were public hearings that were attended by multiple people. That's one. I think, and whenever I hear anything, any confusion from anybody after these elections, it's kind of, it's frustrating, you know, that means, you know, as hard as we do to put the information out there, somewhere there's confusion. I was disappointed when I read the next day in the newspaper, the term override used.
Yeah, yeah.
I saw that in five or six other towns in the articles regarding the votes for projects, and the newspapers keep getting it wrong. They use the term override in the headline, override in the article, it's not an override, it's a debt exclusion, completely different, but for some reason, the newspaper keeps getting it wrong, and it only further adds to confusion.
And it just seems, and it may be a coincidence, but, you know, there's been more confusion since, you know, with the public, since we haven't had regular participation from the media on either side, and for us to have to write our own articles to send papers, it's kind of, it's kind of comical, but I would, I agree with you, we're going to have to do this office somewhere, somehow, two weeks out, you know, communicate clearly what we've got ahead of us, so...
Well, I think at the end of the day, if we cover all of our bases, at least we can't say we didn't try, and we didn't get the word out as best we could, so, you know, ever-changing technology means that we may have to explore other means, even though only maybe a small minority access those. Again, it's a minority that we can maybe alleviate some confusion with by having proper communication, so, again, we're always looking to better ourselves in the way we do things, and then we'll learn from it and move forward.
There was, one of the people I talked to, because I hung around for a while during the day, and, oh, proposition two and a half, I said, that's not what it is. You know, and there was a lot of people that they thought it was just another override deal.
And that's the confusion, again, proposition two and a half covers both overrides and debt exclusions, that information is somehow lost with folks, and we'll, again, try to get that clear, so...
Swipery, how you doing?
Hey.
That's an angry...
Just in time to...
I forgot your name for 36 seconds, I didn't see your moment.
We all have those.
Any other questions on that for the Administrator? Comments?
I think he covered it.
We've had some time to think about it, so. We've had staff meetings and staff discussions and tried to brainstorm, so keep trying to get better.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Town Administrator's Report, request to begin contract execution.
Yeah, I think you, I know we had just a quick discussion or a quick blurb on it last time when we went over my evaluation, but I think you asked to put it on the agenda for a formal vote, and so that's all I did, was just put it on, to have a formal vote that maybe once reorganization ends, you know, after that, then we'll begin the process formally, so...
Great, does anyone have any issues with this item? If not, can I entertain a motion, please?
Motion?
Motion move forward, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And clear, when the reorganization happens, well, that's where the team, negotiating team will be established. Board Liaison Reports. Anybody?
Anything?
Nope. Nothing.
Yeah, I'll mention another board member, I know what you're talking about. I don't have anything on, I'm not on any other board. You guys have specific board liaison assignments, I have not, so...
Yeah, okay.
So if there's any, this is the item that if you have any boards that you are assigned to and you've been meeting with, or have anything to pass on to the rest, this is the time to do it.
I thought you had a comment related to one of those boards, so I think we know what this bullet item is, thank you for the education. Okay, move on to next, our second shot at citizens' input, anyone want to be... Al.
You're letting us down, buddy.
Scream at us or something, please. Okay. Board and member, staff, board member and staff comments.
Wow.
Want to go over what this is for?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
He is having a scene in the moment.
It's been a while. It's been a couple of weeks since we've met. It's a Wednesday. It's not a normal night. Usually be on Monday, so.
Funky Wednesday meetings.
It's kind of hard for us to get our act together, but. Just something that's come up in recent discussion with several of members, and I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, is that there's, obviously there's ramifications of reductions in services, reduction in staff, reduction in hours and time. And certainly we've had the impact of the highway department over the years, and as, as people know, it's taken us longer to do things, and, and they're spread pretty thin when, not only looking at roads, but they also do other things like parks and help out library and helping set up a town meeting, et cetera, et cetera. So they, they certainly are, are behind this season and with, you know, summer vacation season, and we're trying to do the best we can with, with a minimum force. But one in particular service that I wanted to mention is the building inspection services. If you recall, several years ago, we actually had a full-time building inspector and a part-time building inspector when I first started here. And then as part of the, the, the economic downturn, we swiftly and quickly made some decisions and we reduced or eliminated the part-time position. And then over the last few years, we reduced the building inspectors' hours from thirty-seven to thirty-two to now nineteen and a half, which, as you can imagine, certainly has an impact on the service that we provide, the amount of time that is required to not only review applications as they're submitted, big projects and small, to go out in the field and do inspections, to deal with complaints, to deal with calls of people possibly doing work without permits, to then working with the town planner and providing opinions in terms of zoning, assigning off of business certificates, making sure they're in the right zone to do such business, and then providing assistance to the zoning board as needed, or myself. Trying to do all that in, in a short week, Monday, Monday through Wednesday, at part-time hours has certainly been difficult. And we're certainly starting to hear it from not only the business community, property owners, and also the contractors themselves are finding, there's a lot of delays because of the fact that he's got a stack of papers and he can only get to what he can. And as you know, and certainly in all the offices we have, we come in on Monday morning, and there's some fires to put out. So by the time he actually attacks an application, it could be well into the afternoon. So what I'd like to talk about is making some adjustments there in this year's budget somehow, some way. Taking a look at fee structure, taking a look at some source of revenue that we could justify adding some hours back in there. Maybe not to the full thirty-seven, but certainly doing something. You know, I've had some, some, some serious conversations with contractors and with business owners about how it's impacting their ability to keep people working, to keep our projects going, get started, and obviously keep, keep the economy in, in small town like ours going. So that unfortunately is a ramification of the loss of service that we've had. And again, we went, we've gone from fifty-five to sixty hours a week of service down to nineteen and a half in a couple of years. So it certainly has now realized an impact to the community as much as we thought it would, like we had faced with, with certain other departments. So that's something I'm going to put on for the next agenda, June eighth, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Sound good?
Sounds good to me. I mean, just, we'll, we'll get into details, but I guess we have to have the, the fee structure that will support.
Well, what I can tell you from a historical standpoint, the fee, the last time fees in town were, were increased was two thousand and six. Two thousand and six, there was a zoning bile overhaul, and at that time, there was a fee structure that was put in place such that over time, the Office of Development Inspection Services would have their fees bringing enough revenue that it actually would be self-sufficient and pay for all of the services and the positions that are in that office. You know, certainly it's, it's hard to do, and it's certainly hard to do when, when the economic times are poor and people aren't filing permits. But at one time, you know, we were as high as maybe sixty, seventy percent of the revenue coming in was, 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 or, or that, that service was paid for by, by the revenue that was coming in. In two thousand and ten, we again reviewed all of the fees outside of transfer station. We reviewed all of the fees in terms of permitting, and we compared ourselves to all of our other communities. And at that time, we chose to raise, this board, board of selectmen chose to raise certain fees in certain departments. But one of the things that they did not increase was building inspection fees. And if you recall, there was, there was room to go in terms of just getting to the average. We're probably, we're probably sixty percent of where the average was in two thousand and ten, and we had room to go up to that average, and we did not do that at that time. And there was sentiment from several members on the board at that time that maybe it would provide incentive for people to do building here and move here. Maybe it would be certainly, just because we had room doesn't mean we have to. I remember some of the statements and, and also being difficult to raise fees when economic times were still not recovered. So I could, I'm sure I have asked the department to revisit our comparisons. So five years later now, we, I expect that those numbers will even be even higher, the gap that we are in terms of where we are at the average of the community. So if that is one suggestion I have to maybe fund the additional hours is through, through an adjustment in the fees. If we are indeed well below where we should be in relative to where towns are in terms of their fee structure, that's certainly something we need to look at. It's not, you know, obviously the first choice. If we had revenue from other sources, that would be our first choice. But I, I think if you, you need the service, we have to, we have to find ways to, to bring the revenue in. We just, we just don't have the money to, you know, to pull out of the drawer and pay for additional hours without looking at.
Yeah, I think the, also the difference here is in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten, people weren't calling up and saying, I haven't, you know, this is impacting my, my project. And so we've got to find a way to get this function to.
So obviously no decisions tonight. I'll get you the information you need, and then you can decide at, at that time how you want to do it. But again, if we're going to be looking to add hours or add expenses into the budget, you know, add services into the budget or restore services in the budget and requires additional expenses, if our revenues are the same that we're earning when we approved them in May, you're going to have, you're not going to be able to do that. So that's something you need to look at.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I, I'd just like to say, we, we know, we attended the Memorial Day Parade and another great event hosted by the Goddard Kirk Post. As always, thank everyone for coming out and supporting it. It was a, it was a good day.
It was a good day.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
After hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Yeah, I got my second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Our, our next meeting will be June eighth, June eighth, Monday at six PM here at the Memorial Town Hall. Thank you very much and good evening.